Dean, I'd like to welcome everyone to Monday, April 19th, 2021, Joint Meeting of the Greenville City Council and the Greenville Utilities Commission to Order. I'm Mayor PJ Connolly, and I'll be moderating tonight's meeting. Now, I will hand it off to Chairman Overton to call the meeting to order for Greenville Utilities.
Okay, this time I'd like to call the meeting to order at the same time.
All right. Um, now I'd like to call on the city clerk for the roll call. Madam Clerk.
Mayor Connolly?
Here.
Mayor Protem Glover?
Here.
Councilmember Daniels?
Present.
Councilmember Bell?
Here.
Councilmember Smiley?
Here.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Councilmember Litchfield, present.
Councilmember Meyerhoff?
I am here.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Now, I'll call on Chairman Overton.
At the same time, I'll call on Amy Wade. Amy, if you'll do a roll call.
Okay. Chair Overton?
Here.
Commissioner Stotin? Commissioner Stotin?
Here.
Commissioner Wall?
Yes.
Commissioner Darden?
Here.
Commissioner Geiger?
Here.
Commissioner Griffin? Commissioner Braswell?
Here.
Commissioner Anderson? We do have a quorum.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to the approval of tonight's agenda. Madam Manager, are there any recommended changes?
I have no changes for tonight's agenda, Mayor Connolly.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Bell, second by Councilmember Meyerhoff. For all those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. I'll call on the city clerk for the vote.
Mayor Connolly?
I don't have to vote on this one.
Okay. Mayor Protem Glover?
Are we voting?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Yay.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Councilmember Litchfield, aye.
Councilmember Meyerhoff?
Aye.
Motion passes six zero, Mayor.
Thank you very much. I'll call on Chairman Overton.
Okay. This time, when they approve the agenda also, need a motion to accept?
So moved. Kelly Darden.
And the second?
Second. Peter Geiger.
Okay. Oh, any, let's see. Any discussion? Okay. Motion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
You want to do a roll call on that one?
You need to.
Okay. Do a roll call on that one, if you will, Amy.
Okay. Commissioner Stotin?
Aye.
Commissioner Anderson? Commissioner Wall?
Aye.
Commissioner Darden?
Aye.
Commissioner Geiger?
Aye.
Commissioner Griffin? Commissioner Braswell?
Aye.
Motion carries. I mean, I'm sorry.
Right.
Agenda passes.
Thank you.
All right. We'll move on to the public comment period. The public comment period is a period reserved for comments by the public. Items that were or scheduled to be the subject of a public hearing conducted at the same meeting or another meeting during the same week shall not be discussed. A total of 30 minutes is allocated with each individual being allowed no more than three minutes. Individuals who registered with the city clerk to speak will speak in the order registered until the allotted 30 minutes expires. If time remains after all persons who registered have spoken, individuals who did not register will have an opportunity to speak until the allotted 30 minutes expires. Madam Clerk, our first speaker?
Mayor, our first speaker is Mr. Chad Carwin. Mr. Carwin, you have three minutes to address the City Council and the GUC Commission.
Hello. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Excellent. I'm speaking, I've requested to speak tonight to recognize Earth Day, which is on Thursday, April 22nd. My name is Chad Carwin. I am the Sustainability Manager for ECU. But tonight, I'm speaking to the Council and GUC Commission as a concerned citizen of Greenville. The world is facing countless environmental challenges that are growing in severity on a constant basis. Ocean acidification, deforestation, droughts, wildfires, habitat loss, sea level rise, coral bleaching, overfishing, climate change, and more. Just over the summer, as our local recycling facility stopped accepting glass, NPR published an investigative piece which revealed that we have only recycled about 10% of plastics in the past 30-plus years. In addition, it is agreed upon fact in the scientific community that we have now entered a period of the sixth mass extinction on Earth, largely due to human-induced causes. Things are looking pretty doom and gloom all around the world. Unfortunately, we're facing our own challenges right here in Greenville. Rapid growth and development have deteriorated our local streams and put waterways at risk. We are more limited than ever in terms of what we can and cannot recycle, and our local utility provider is less than cooperative when it comes to implementing solar. GUC is keeping our community behind others around the state when it comes to solar adoption. To my knowledge, GUC offers no incentives, tax rebates, purchase credits, et cetera, for citizens to install solar. To make matters worse, they charge fees for installing solar and do not offer a competitive rate to purchase excess power generated by consumers' solar PV array, which makes these systems economically justifiable. Unfortunately, we've not been able to take advantage of this exploding industry. Meanwhile, as a nation, we've been subsidizing and artificially lowering the cost of fossil fuels since dawn of the industrial age. This has got to stop. Those that argue for letting the free market determine the price of these resources should be just as upset as the quote-unquote "environmentalists." It seems like a good idea to pause here and remind everyone that Earth Day was officially declared by a Republican president's administration. Preserving the environment and being good stewards of national resources were and still should be conservative viewpoints. Conservation should not be a partisan issue. So, at the time, we're willing to help alleviate all the stress that humans have caused on our planet and its wild inhabitants. What will the city commit to doing? Promoting trash pickup days is great, but the efforts must push beyond the most basic task we are currently pursuing. We need greater commitment when it comes to protecting the only place we can call home, Planet Earth.
Thank you, Mr. Carwin.
Like Earth Day? Am I out of time?
Yes, unfortunately. Thank you, Mr. Carwin. We appreciate your comments, and we'll keep those in mind.
I was gonna give you some good news, but we'll save it.
All right. Thank you. I appreciate it. All right. Madam Clerk, our next speaker?
Mayor, our next speaker is Mr. David Ames. Mr. Ames, you have three minutes to address the Greenville City Council and the GUC Commission.
All right. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, good. Okay. I'm David Ames, the Chair of the Cypress Group of the Sierra Club, and I just want to briefly follow up on Chad's comment. Today's, or this week anyways, the 50th anniversary of Earth Day, founded in 1970. It was a way of focusing attention on damage to the environment and need for protection. The objectives have remained the same, but now, more than ever, temperature, global temperature rise is the issue. Scientists tell us that every year, the temperature has been warmer than any time in the past, and this will only continue if we keep doing what we're doing now. If we stay on the same trajectory, by the end of the century, the Earth will be so warm that there will be serious or catastrophic damage to the environment. The only way that can be changed is by making a commitment to stop using fossil fuels. So, at this point, both the federal and state governments have made a commitment to move away from fossil fuel, oil and gas, to sustainable energy, and to decrease greenhouse gas emissions by 2050 by 100%. This is a worthy objective for the GUC and the Greenville City Council to adopt as their own also. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Ames. Madam Clerk, our next speaker?
We have no more speakers, Mayor.
All right. Thank you very much. We'll close the public comment period, and we'll move on to item number three. Madam Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Item number three is the approval of the April 24th, 2019, Joint City Council-Greenville Utility Commission Board Meeting.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved. So moved. Second.
All right. Was that Councilmember Bell, and second by Councilmember Smiley? Was that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Second by Councilmember Bell, second by Councilmember Smiley. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. I'll call on the city clerk for the vote.
Mayor Protem Glover?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Councilmember Litchfield, aye.
Councilmember Meyerhoff?
Aye.
All right. I'll call on Chair Overton for Greenville Utilities.
Okay. Approval of the minutes for April 24th, 2019. Amy, if you'll make that call also to ayes and anes?
You have to have a motion and a second.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Do you need a motion to approve?
This is Peter. I'll motion to approve the minutes.
And a second?
I'll second. This is Tommy Stotin.
Tommy, and Amy, if you'll do the same thing on the ayes and anes.
Okay. Commissioner Stotin?
Aye.
Commissioner Wall?
Aye.
Commissioner Darden?
Aye.
Commissioner Geiger?
Aye.
Commissioner Griffin?
Aye.
Commissioner Braswell?
Aye. Thanks.
Ayes have it. Okay. Thank you.
All right. We'll go to item number four. Madam Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Item number four is the consideration of a market adjustment/m merit allocation for FY 2021/2022, and I'll call on Assistant City Manager, CFO, Michael Cowan.
Good evening. So, March 30th, the Joint Pay Plan Committee met to review the position of the Joint Pay Plan for this upcoming year. The objectives of both boards are to maintain a pay system that is internally equitable and competitive with the external marketplace. Each year, both the city and GUC review salary market surveys, public sector benchmarks, and local private employer benchmarks to ensure that an equitable and competitive pay plan is being maintained. Over the next few minutes, we'll just review the results of each one of those benchmarks relative to fiscal year 2021/22. Here are the results of the six salary market surveys that both the city and GUC routinely look at to analyze the projected increases for the next year. The range is anywhere from a projected increase of 2.2% per the old CAI, now known as Catapult, and up to 7.3% for Aon Hewitt. As much as the staff loved the results of the Aon Hewitt survey, we did recognize that as an outlier. If we remove that survey from the mix, the average projected increase for fiscal year 2021/22 is approximately 2.7%. And it is worth noting that both the city and GUC have traditionally looked at the CAI as its primary benchmark, again, which is now known as Catapult. We also looked at a mix of 26 public sector benchmarks made up of both municipalities and utilities. Of those 26, 26 responded that the average increase for the current fiscal year 2020/21 was approximately 2.2% average wage increase that actually realized in this current fiscal year. Seven of those 26 benchmarks responded for a projection with concerns to next fiscal year 2021/22 with a projected average increase of approximately 3.9%. Again, it is worth noting that many of these organizations are in the same situation as both the city and GUC. They're in the process of putting their budgets together for next year, and as of the point which this survey was prepared, those organizations had not yet made its decision with regards to their projected pay increases. We also looked at 19 local private employers through a survey. Of those 19, 10 responded that they actually realized a 2.1% average increase for the current fiscal year 2021, and those 10 employers were projecting an average increase of 2.6% for 2021/22. So you can see a comparison amongst those benchmarks with concerns to both the current fiscal year 2021, and you see that the city and GUC both realize an actual increase this current year of 2%, 2% actual wage increase for our employees. And then projected for 2021/22, Catapult, formerly known as the CAI, looking at 2.2% public sector, looking at 3.9, and the private sector, 2.6. If you go back and look at the last six years, the last six years, the city and GUC have seen an average increase per year of approximately 2.4% with a low of 2% and a high of 3.2%. And again, this overall actual increase is made up of both a merit and market adjustment. So, at its March 30th meeting, the committee voted unanimously to recommend that the City Council and GUC Board approve a 2% overall merit market adjustment for fiscal year 2021/22 with no adjustment to the salary structure for fiscal year 2021/22 as well. Staff will take any questions or comments that the boards may have.
Are there any questions for Mr. Cowan?
I have a question, Mayor.
Yes.
Mr. Cowan, are we looking at our compression rate for our, as we do these adjustments, to see if our, some of our employees may be falling behind because, you know, we worked on that when you first came? And to make sure that there were so many employees, and they were the lower-paid ones, who was at this compression point? So, are we looking at that when we look at our increases?
Yes, ma'am. Mayor Protem Glover, we, the way that the city's merit program is structured is that we have one pay matrix for those that are above the median of the pay grade and another pay matrix for those that are below the median of the pay grade. And the purpose of that is to be able to move those up more quickly that are below the mid-range point of the pay grade. And what we consistently see in the way that we structure that is a percentage increase, an annual merit increase higher for those that are below the midpoint than we do those that are above the midpoint. Using the same logic that we put together approximately six years ago when I first came here, looking at that structure again for those that are below the midpoint and those that are above. And consistently, we provide a higher-level increase for those that are below to address that compression that you speak on.
Okay.
Any other questions for Mr. Cowan? Greenville Utilities, have any questions?
Anybody going to bring me to the side? Have your questions for? And being none, back to you.
All right. Do we have a, do we need a motion to approve this? Madam Manager?
Yes, Mayor, we do.
Okay. Is there a motion by the council?
Move to approve the recommendation.
Second.
All right. Motion was made by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Bell. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. I'll call on the city clerk for the vote.
Mayor Protem Glover?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Councilmember Litchfield, aye.
Councilmember Meyerhoff?
Aye.
Motion passes six zero, Mayor.
And for the Greenville Utilities, I need a motion to approve?
So moved. Kelly, a second? Second. Lindsey.
Lindsey Griffin. Okay. And if you'll do, Amy, you'll do the roll call, please.
Commissioner Stotin?
Aye.
Commissioner Wall?
Aye.
Commissioner Darden?
Aye.
Commissioner Geiger?
Aye.
Commissioner Griffin?
Aye.
Commissioner Braswell?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. We'll move on to item number five. Madam Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Item number five is the consideration of an additional 457 plan offering. I'll again call on Mr. Cowan.
Again, presented for consideration is the additional 457 retirement plan that is sponsored by the state of North Carolina. This is a voluntary plan with no city or GUC employer contributions. This would be an additional plan provided under one umbrella for both the 401K plan and the North Carolina 457 plan, making it easier for employees to monitor their North Carolina accounts. The new plan provides multiple investment choices with penalty-free withdrawals and reduced fees compared to the current 457 plan. And if approved, the new North Carolina 457 plan would be effective January 1st of 2022. At its March 30th meeting, the Joint Pay and Benefits Committee voted unanimously to recommend the City Council and GUC Board approve the addition of the state-sponsored 457 plan effective January 1st, 2022.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Cowan?
Move to approve.
Second.
All right. Motion was made by Councilmember Daniels, second by Mayor Protem Glover. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. I'll call on the city clerk for the vote.
Mayor Protem Glover?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Councilmember Litchfield, aye.
Councilmember Meyerhoff?
Aye.
Motion passes six zero, Mayor.
According to, according to Greenville Utilities, additional 457 plan, need a motion?
So moved. Kristen.
Thank you, Kristen. I need a second.
Second. This is Peter Geiger.
Any questions from anybody? Okay. Amy, who'll roll call?
Commissioner Stotin?
Aye.
Commissioner Wall?
Aye.
Commissioner Darden? Commissioner Geiger?
Aye.
Commissioner Griffin?
Aye.
Commissioner Braswell?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. Back to you, AJ.
All right. We'll move to item number six. Madam Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Item number six is the consideration of the approval of Bethel's Water and Wastewater System Ownership Transfer Agreement. I will pass this on to General Manager Tony Cannon.
Thank you very much. As you all know, we have been working with the town of Bethel for a number of years on the possibility of transferring the ownership of their water and wastewater systems to Greenville Utilities. We were fortunate to get some grant funding, and we have been working very closely with the town of Bethel and the state of North Carolina to make this transfer happen. Last Thursday evening, the town commissioners in Bethel voted unanimously to approve the transfer agreement, and tonight, we're going to be asking both the GUC Board of Commissioners and the City Council to approve the transfer agreement and the budgets and ordinances for the projects related to the transfer of the systems. I'm going to ask Chris Paget to give a brief summary of what we've accomplished to date, and then we'll ask you for the action.
Are you able to see my screen?
Yes, we can. We see you.
Very good. There we go. So, as Tony said, we've been working on this project for some time. Really, the beginning was almost five years ago. I know you're all familiar with it. I know you're all familiar with the Bethel Systems. There's a snapshot slide here just kind of introducing you to the systems. We've been over this information with GUC Board of Commissioners a couple times over the last couple of years. Most recently, City Council, I believe in February, at a workshop, we reviewed this with you, so I'm not going to spend a lot of time on background. But what I'm going to say is that, you know, four and a half years ago or so, when we first started talking about this, that there were really two challenges we were facing. One was the condition of the Bethel Systems. They weren't comparable to the GUC Systems. We knew it was going to take a lot of resources to bring them up to an acceptable level, and we also knew that it would not be right for us to put the burden of making those improvements on existing GUC customers. The other challenge that we were facing was that Bethel Systems had some debt on them. At the time, it was about $4 million. And again, how do you address that in an appropriate manner so as to not impact our current customers? So those were kind of the challenges, and we think we've come up with effective and reasonable solutions to those challenges, and we'll walk you through that right now. So, we're going to begin with the capital needs. And GUC staff, last summer, spent a lot of time in Bethel. We evaluated both systems thoroughly, and what you see here on the screen were the capital needs that came out of that evaluation. And overall, the water system's in very good shape. There is some galvanized pipe that needs to be replaced. One of the wells needs some work. We'd like to create a redundant loop. We have to replace water meters, but nothing unusual here. We're very comfortable with the water needs on the system.
Your slides are not advancing.
Well? Not sure why.
Yeah. I did.
Okay. I see the system needs now.
Okay. On the wastewater side, you know, they've got more and more significant needs. Two of the four pump stations need to be replaced. We identified 118 manholes that need to be rehabilitated. There's 53 locations where we've got to dig down and replace sections of pipe, make repairs, things of that nature. The good news here is that the engineer estimates that were, the engineering reports that were created for these improvements show that they can be fully funded with the available grant funding that Bethel has already received, the $4.37 million. So that is, in fact, good news. Did my screen advance?
No.
No.
Not sure what the problem is here.
You may want to start the slideshow.
Do you see the debt slide?
No.
We got it now.
Okay.
Okay. Sorry about that. So, in terms of the debt, at the end of fiscal, of this current fiscal year, June 30th, Bethel's projected to have 3.5 million in outstanding debt on its water and wastewater systems. They also have a loan from their general fund of just under a quarter million dollars. Interest rates on that existing debt are relatively high. The highest amount you can see there is 4.5%, which isn't competitive in today's market. And the bonds, some of the bonds aren't scheduled to be fully repaid until 2052, so it's a very long duration on them. Our approach to addressing this debt is for GUC and the city to issue new revenue bonds and to retire that existing debt. By doing so, our all-in interest rate cost would be expected to be about 2.15%, which would provide a net present value savings of $655,000 for about 18% over the life of the bonds. The process for this refunding is well underway. Both the GUC Board and City Council have both given the necessary approvals. The local government commission has approved the debt issuance. We are scheduled to speak with the rating agencies later this week, and if the board, both boards approve the transfer agreement tonight, we would plan to go to market with the bonds next month. And it's important to note here that current GUC customers will not pay for this new debt. This debt will be fully paid for with a monthly surcharge that will be added to the bills of Bethel customers, and they would pay that over the next 20 years until that debt is fully paid off, and then it would roll off of their bills. These next several slides are just touching on the high points of the framework of the agreement. To begin with, you know, the systems would be transferred to the city of Greenville to the city of Greenville for the use and benefit of Greenville Utility Commission. That's how all of our infrastructure is titled, and that's based on the relationship between the utility and the city as dictated by our charter. GUC will be responsible for the operation and maintenance of the systems. And the Bethel customers today will become retail customers of Greenville Utilities. All of the capital improvements will be managed by Greenville Utilities. They will be paid for by the grant money that has been awarded to Bethel. That money will not go directly to Bethel. We've worked with the state agencies. That money will flow through directly to GUC, who will be managing those projects. As I mentioned before, Bethel's existing debt will be refinanced over a 20-year term. Customers located within the Bethel service area will pay that debt using a monthly surcharge on their bill. At the end of the 20 years, that surcharge would be eliminated. Customers within the Bethel corporate limits will pay a water rate that is 15% higher than the inside Greenville rate. This is a new rate that was developed for municipalities outside of Greenville. And the structure will allow the monthly bills paid by Bethel customers to be immediately reduced. And we'll look at the details on that in just a moment. One of the things we had to tackle as we went through this process was, obviously, Bethel does want to grow over time, and this infrastructure should allow them to begin working in that direction. And so we had to define what the Bethel service area was going to be. And the way the agreement is structured, the Bethel service area includes the Bethel corporate limits and up to two miles outside of the contiguous corporate limits. And any request for wastewater extensions within that service area would have to be approved by the Bethel Board. They'd have to request annexation. And really, the process is designed to be, to mirror what we do with the Greenville City Council for extensions outside of the Greenville ETJ. The map I provided here on the right is simply to show you that light blue line would be the two-mile buffer around the Bethel city limits. The real light green line is three miles away from the Greenville's existing contiguous city limits. That three miles is as far as Greenville could currently annex property based on general statutes. And you can see here that the two city limits are some, almost nine miles away from each other. And there's still plenty of room for Greenville to grow over future decades to the north. And a lot of room as well for Bethel in the northern part of the county to have opportunities for growth as well. The transfer date on the agreement is July 1. That was done to align with the fiscal years of all three entities that are party to the agreement. This next slide shows you the proposed rate estimate for Bethel customers. Today, a typical residential customer in Bethel pays about $106 per month for water and wastewater services. After the transfer, they were paying $82 a month, which is about a 23% savings monthly. And that includes the $25.69 for the surcharge that would go to debt. This, these numbers you see here, they're going to change a little bit. The GUC Board approved a preliminary budget on Thursday, and one of the changes that was made at that meeting was that a proposed water rate increase that had previously been proposed for next year has been deferred for a number of reasons. And so these numbers will change. Actually, the percentage decrease in Bethel customer bills will approach 25% instead of 23. But over the course of the five years, that 21.7% is where it would end up based on the current rate plan. So as far as next steps, the first step is obviously we're asking you for approval of the transfer agreement and the capital project budgets this evening. Assuming we get that, we will begin the design process for those capital improvements. We're going to, there's a process to transfer customers over from Bethel to GUC. We've got 750 water meters to change out and a detailed process to do that. We'll go to market with the bonds in May. We would then be retiring that debt in June and hopefully have a smooth transfer and rollover effective July 1. But the recommended actions are separate actions first for the GUC Board of Commissioners to approve the water and wastewater systems ownership transfer agreement. And then after that, for the Greenville City Council, take those same action. I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, at this time, on item number six, the consideration of the approval of the of the transfer, I need a motion on that?
I'll motion to approve, Peter Geiger.
Thank you, Peter, and I need a second.
Second, Kristen.
Any more discussion for Chris? Being none, Amy, if you'll do a roll call?
Commissioner Stotin?
Aye.
Commissioner Wall?
Aye.
Commissioner Darden?
Aye.
Commissioner Geiger?
Aye.
Commissioner Griffin?
Aye.
Commissioner Braswell?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, PG, the motion passes. We'll turn it back over to you.
All right, are there any questions for Mr. Pageant?
Move to approve.
All right.
Second.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Daniels, second by Mayor Protim Glover. All those in favor say aye, those opposed say nay. I'll call on the city clerk for the vote.
Mayor Protim Glover?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Councilmember Litchfield, aye.
Councilmember Meyerhofer?
Aye.
Motion passes six zero, Mayor.
All right, thank you very much. We'll move on to item number seven, Madam Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number seven is the consideration of the adoption of water and sewer capital projects budgets and ordinance for the transfer of the water and wastewater system from Bethel to Greenville Utilities Commission. I will again call on Mr. Cannon.
Thank you, Madam Manager. Chris, you could advance the slide. You see here the capital project revenues coming from grants from the state. Total revenues, 4.367 million dollars. And matching on the expense side would be the water system improvements and the wastewater system improvements. So we would ask for that the GUC adopt the capital projects budget and recommend similar action by the City Council, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, at this time, item number seven, I need a motion to adopt a project.
So moved Chairman Overton. This is Lindsey.
Thank you, Lindsey, and I need a second.
Second, Kelly Darden.
Thank you, Kelly. Any other discussions for Tony or Chris? Being none, Amy, she'll do a roll call.
Commissioner Stotin?
Aye.
Commissioner Wall?
Aye.
Commissioner Darden?
Aye.
Commissioner Geiger?
Aye.
Commissioner Griffin?
Aye.
Commissioner Braswell?
Aye.
Motion passes.
That motion also passes. PG, Mayor, back to you.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Cannon? Any questions for Mr. Cannon? Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Daniels. All those in favor say aye, those opposed say nay. I'll call on the city clerk for the vote.
Mayor Protim Glover?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Councilmember Litchfield, aye.
Councilmember Meyerhofer?
Aye.
Motion passes six zero, Mayor.
All right, thank you very much. I believe we need a motion to adjourn from Greenville Utilities Commission first, I think, Chairman Overton.
I need a motion to adjourn from Greenville Utilities.
Peter Geiger, I'll motion to adjourn.
And a second?
Second, Kristen.
Okay, and Amy, roll call?
Commissioner Stotin?
Aye.
Commissioner Wall?
Aye.
Commissioner Darden?
Aye.
Commissioner Geiger?
Aye.
Commissioner Griffin?
Aye.
Commissioner Braswell?
Aye.
Passes.
Okay, thank you. Motion passes, and thank all of the Greenville Utilities, everybody being here, and back over to you, Mayor.
All right, need a motion to adjourn from the City Council?
Motion to adjourn. Second.
All right, motion's been made by Mayor Protim Glover, second by Councilmember Daniels. All those in favor say aye, those opposed say nay. I'll call on the city clerk for the vote.
Mayor Protim Glover?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Councilmember Litchfield, aye.
Councilmember Meyerhofer?
Aye.
Motion passes six zero, Mayor.
All right, thank you very much. Everybody have a good night.
Have a good night. Good job.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good job. Thank you.
Good night, everybody.